Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll, please?
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady is absent.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments at any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening, you could step up to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a five-minute time limit for each person.
My name is Larry Rudin and I live at 393 Willow Lane in Manassas. And I have presented, I hope everyone in the council, a petition that I made yesterday and had signed by the Willow Lane residents. And I want to state in front of everyone that I do not want sidewalk put in front of my house or on my street. I have listed some of the things in the ordinance that you have on sidewalks, but if you want to look over this, I can briefly go, you know, I'm thinking that this is just a waste of money. I don't know what a sidewalk costs nowadays, but if it's $3 or $4 a lineal foot, this is $30,000-plus dollars that we can either pay down our debt or use for someplace else. It creates an unnecessary maintenance fee on the city in addition to the millions of feet of sidewalk we must have in the city by now. I think that it could cause legal challenges. I'm sure that people fall or have problems with sidewalks. And we do not meet any of the four criteria of my understanding of the need for sidewalks. We don't have the density. I believe there is maybe 35 to 40 houses on Lake Road and Willow Lane that have to come down Willow Lane on a daily basis. We had a traffic study made in 1989 when I was here last, 31 years ago or so, and there were 241 cars that drove on the street daily. People come home at noon, go back and forth. That's not even close to 500 that is a density threshold. There are only seven residents with sidewalks on the street now. There's no traffic engineering combination of hazardous conditions that I know, and as I stated, I've lived in my present house for 31 years. I have never read or seen or heard of any pedestrian or biker being hit by a car or any accidents that I'm aware of. Maybe the police department can go back in their records and find that, I'm not sure. In the new subdivisions, I believe that there's been exceptions to sidewalks. I don't want to shovel my sidewalk. I have to shovel a sidewalk on Lopa Street because my lot goes through to there and I don't need more sidewalks to shovel. I have gotten at least 16 or 17 residents on Willow Lane without sidewalks to sign my petition. I believe that is by far the majority. There was three people that were not home that I couldn't find. I think personally sidewalks are old school. We don't need them anymore. Nobody walks on them. The streets are much better. They're salted. It's safer. If we would, if someone would entertain talking to me about what I think the city should be doing, I would be willing to give them citizen input once. And I know we're all citizens. We don't need curb and gutter anymore. It just breaks every winter with our equipment that's steel and huge. We spend, I don't know how many thousand dollars a year replacing the gutters on Nicollet Boulevard because they're smashed every winter. We could use this money to repair Nicollet Boulevard, which is in much worse condition than Willow Lane is, and Racine Street, the two gateways to Manassas. The roads are terrible. I've asked the, what is his name, Thad Brown, what he could do from the railroad track to Walgreens on Racine Street just to make it so it's not so bumpy. Well, we have to wait for two more years, so we're budgeting that in. Well, great. It's a gateway to our city. At least we got downtown fix from all of those joints, but it's just going to continue to happen. We use salt brine now. It gets in between the cracks. It heaves up our street. There would be nothing wrong with Willow Lane if it was sealed and the towns are using a new glass asphalt black base that seems to be holding up for seven or eight years already that we could seal, go back to seal coating our asphalt sideways. There seems to be a big concern with my neighbors that we have some pump water drainage onto the street by the lagoon and about the center of the street, and this is causing a lot of the repair needs and the ice buildup in the winter. I would like our park or our city crew, what is it, Public Works Director, to make a French sewer there that connects to the lateral that crosses over the street, that freezes up every year and pushes up, and then in the spring it falls back down. If you don't know what a French sewer is, Google it. It's made with stone and it'll work 80% of the time. If you need something else to do, I would suggest that you work on the 17-year-old house that's been abandoned on Willow Lane that nobody, including myself, seems to be able to resolve. If the new water main is going in where I think it is on Willow Lane, I assume it will go under the existing seven houses that have water sidewalks there. And if that's true, I would like to petition the city that they be removed. And I'm sure the residents would love not to shovel their sidewalks that are just wasted. The city wouldn't have to maintain them because they're up and down already. They're 40, 50 years old. I don't know when. Again, I don't think that it's necessary for sidewalks anymore. In three years, we're going to have rideless cars or driverless cars. We won't have to worry about being hit by a car anymore. So let's get with the 21st century. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rudin. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Joe Ferraro and I live on 355 Willow Lane. I did sign Mr. Rudin's petition. I am strongly opposed to a sidewalk on our street. It's one of the most beautiful streets in the City of Manassas. We were attracted to the property originally because it did not have sidewalks. It had a very country feel. We're right across from the inlet on the lake there. It's where the wagon goes by in the winter. It's just a beautiful place. Sidewalks would modernize it and destroy the beauty. So I'm strongly opposed and I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. My name's Diane Ferraro. I'm Joe's wife. I also live at 355 Willow Lane. And when I moved to the valley from Kenosha, I kept coming back to Dodie Island because of the beauty and the uniqueness of it. It has a certain charm, and no matter where I looked, I kept coming back to Dodie Island. And I found a little ranch house there that's across the lagoon. And my main concern is the sun pump. I don't know how this happened, but apparently the water from the houses behind us drain into our, our street and underneath our homes. So I have two sun pumps that are going constantly the entire year. It's running more now than it has this spring and summer. And if anything's an issue and a big concern, I would think, is the sun pump with the water because that is doing nothing but erode the roads that are there. If you come in front of my house, we just put a new driveway in about two years ago, and the road all in front of it, the water just accumulates there, it freezes, and it makes a mess. And that's more of a danger than anything else. As to the sidewalks and people walking on them, I can tell you that people do not use the sidewalks anywhere. I'm a nurse. I work at Aurora Healthcare in Oshkosh. And when I leave the house at 6:00 in the morning, there are runners and joggers and dog walkers out there, and no one uses the sidewalks when they are available because they prefer not going up and down, and runners especially don't like to have it. So the majority of people don't even use the sidewalks on Dodie Island. They're constantly in the streets. So if there's any safety concern, it would be for these people that are not even abiding by traffic laws and walking in the middle of the street. I've stopped several people several times saying, "You are dressed in black. I can't see you. You have no reflective material. I'm going very slow," but I see them at the last minute, and their response is, "Oh, I'll jump out of the way." Really? I don't know. I care more about my life and my safety than just jumping out of the way. And then the other thing, Willow Lane is extremely safe. There's no true, through traffic that comes there. The kids play in the street constantly. I've got little kids on both sides of me now, two little girls on one side and a little girl and a little boy. They're constantly in the street. They play there all day long. They've got their bikes. They wouldn't even be on the sidewalk. For us, it's a safe environment and we really enjoy the beauty, but I would prefer my tax dollars to go to a real issue, which is the sun pumps destroying the roads. It's useless to fix anything else up if you're not going to address the main problem. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm Jeanette Baggett, 848 Nicollet Boulevard in Manassas. I live on the corner of Nicollet Boulevard and Willow Lane. My husband and I are opposed to having the sidewalks on Willow Lane. One reason is the sidewalk would be just too close to our sunroom, and they would have to remove one, maybe two 15-year-old trees, and it would be just too much to shovel. We also have a sewer pipe in our driveway that would be in the way. We've lived here for over 25 years. Sidewalks are not needed due to low traffic, and it's a waste of money that could be better spent on repairing existing sidewalks or fixing potholes or bringing down the debt. We would like you to vote no on the sidewalks. They're just not needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
I'm Nelson Rodriguez. I'm at 393 Willow Lane, a new resident to Dodie Island. Again, drawn to the area because of its more rustic rural look. In full agreement of what my neighbors have also said in respect to wasteful spending, creating an unnecessary burden on the, on the city to maintain such sidewalks, having walked in the neighborhood regularly, even now as it's gotten, the temperatures have dropped, I've seen that a lot of the sidewalks currently already have some faults in the area that should probably be maintained. A lot that opens the city up to liability. The city might claim sovereign immunity, however, just as recent as August, the 2018, the Illinois Supreme Court, I know does not have bearing on Wisconsin, but has allowed cities to be sued because of faulty sidewalk maintenance. I think that is worth considering. Furthermore, again, sidewalks are not deemed mandatory by any statute or ordinance within the city code. And again, just the burden of snow removal, it's just an undue burden being placed on residents, and again, can increase costs, can lead, we already know that snow removal can lead to heart attacks and other just dangerous, I guess, results for either young or old. And it's just, again, opens up the city to liability. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Evy Rudin and I live at 393 Willow Lane also. One of my points, as you know, everyone has given a number of issues here, but the one thing that I think about too is if you go down Kai Street, three-quarters of that street is not paved with sidewalk. If you go down Willow Lane, you aren't going to be putting sidewalk on the other side of the street. I don't, we have been here for over 30 years. I think the street has been in existence for about 80 years. I don't know that there's been an accident or not, but I just think that it's really an unnecessary thing to be doing for us. And we've lived there very happily without sidewalks. I had children that played, you know, through our yard, which is a good size, but also, you know, skateboarding and other things there, and I don't think anyone has ever felt unsafe. Our neighbors do pay attention and do watch every, each other, but I just wanted to say that, you know, we don't really have all the streets with sidewalks. I don't see the reason to do this for us now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing, oh.
Jeff Harvey, 514 Broad Street. 18 years, having the same bout again, talking about safety against special interests. I talked with our Public Works Director, Director Josh here at the DOT meeting the other day at the school, and he said the police chief recommended way back when that Broad Street should be a one-way for safety reasons at the Racine Street intersection. Certainly, there's been no analysis done on my street that I can even remember how much traffic goes down that street, but this much I can tell you, it's increased. So what's changed? What safety has changed on my intersection that I hear crashes all the time and I hear police? The director said, "The reason for the two-way traffic is to help us that live on Broad Street." He didn't talk to me. Nobody talked to us on our street. You know, if you're going to sit here and do what's best for us, how about you talk to us and let us know ahead of time? Okay? And then we can sit down and talk. I just don't understand the whole gist of this argument. The residents on Broad Street have always chose safety over personal desires and wants. We've always had. What changed? Possibility? A new group of condo residents on one side of Broad Street that wants the convenience over safety? What are we doing here? What world are we living in nowadays? I mean, is not traffic, crashes, inattentive driving increased phenomenally in the last five years? Five years? We won't even talk about the 18 years I've been there. The letter I recently received from the city says, "Since they want to repay Broad Street in 2019, let's go ahead and stripe it for two-way traffic." There's no stripes now. There's no reason to make it a two-way street. There's no reason to stripe it next year. And then there's no reason to stripe it when the bridge is done. So the city now thinks that Racine and Broad Street are safer now with more traffic than ever before. Now we have a fast food joint on that corner now with driveways that will cause even more congestions and accidents. Still, for years, I've been begging for solar-powered, lighted crosswalk aids. How much is that for the safety of Manassas residents? Okay? On top of all this, when you put your roundabout in, what do you do? You look at your, your plans on your J, your Plan J for the roundabout? You've got one lane of traffic now instead of two. So what are you going to have? You're going to have more congestion backing up onto the bridge. So bottled up one lane of traffic and coming out of the roundabout, heading northbound on Racine and Broad in the near future with a new bridge, and if you look at the median that you're going to put in coming off of that roundabout, any crash between that roundabout and Broad Street because somebody's wanting to turn right off of Broad onto Racine, some inattentive driver's not watching, or any kind of people turning into Jimmy John's in front of people that are coming north on Racine Street, we have a crash. Now we have a made, not only a major backup, now we've got a roundabout that's going to be shut down. Now you're going to have traffic over the bridge shut down. Okay? You guys need to think, okay? If you're going to have one lane of traffic, why do you want to add problems to an already bad intersection? And now on top of that, we have a Jimmy John's, okay? So now, now that's a variable that, you know, that's not going to change. It's not a variable anymore. So adding more variables to this intersection now and in the future with more traffic from a two-way street shows the city's not looking out for the citizens' safety. Apparently only special interest groups. Josh swears up and down, "No, there's no special interest going on here." Well, how can something such common sense, you would want to do something against common sense and make something more dangerous for your, your people of Manassas? And the last question I have, this is really for the police chief and the top cop right here. I hope you wouldn't mind if someone's standing on a public sidewalk, shining a spotlight in the windows of your house, because this council will be allowing 12 units of condo owners to drive their vehicles up out of an underground garage, turn onto Broad Street, shine their lights into my, into my house windows if Broad Street is turned into a two-way street. I hope you wouldn't arrest me for that, okay? Because he's saying that that's okay. So why I shouldn't be able to go over there and shine lights or anybody else shine lights in somebody's house? You know, he's saying that it's okay. So adding congestion to this intersection that will always be congested is not being a good and wise steward of the people you're supposed to be protecting and representing. And I ask that you would do what's right for the citizens, not me, not my special interests, but what's right for the City of Manassas and keep them safe in this crazy world of drivers we have nowadays that I experience every night for 12 hours and see many crashes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Oh, good evening. I'm Christine Kopp. I live at 518 Broad Street, and I agree with everything that my neighbor Jeff Harvey just said. And by the way, I do walk on sidewalks. My husband and I walked on sidewalks on Dodie Island this afternoon, and I've got over three miles I can show you on my Fitbit. But yeah, what about pedestrians? I've asked about that before because we do walk a lot and we try and cross Racine Street regularly. I mean, we just did tonight. I wear a light-colored coat, so people don't hit me. And a lot of times we do wear vests. Yeah, and we are opposed to the roundabout, but yeah. And as far as making Broad Street a two-way street, we are also opposed to that. And by the way, we currently do have lights shining in our windows thanks to the condos with their basement garages. Hate it, especially in winter, especially this time of year, early in the morning. Anyway, you know, it's dark a lot. But yeah, please, you know, I don't know why you can't ask us what we want as far as this two-way street goes, you know. We haven't been surveyed. It's the same thing with the Jimmy John's, even though it's two, you know, two houses down from where I live. I didn't know anything about it until all of a sudden, I think, our councilman, you know, told me about it. Thanks a lot, you know? But yet we're expected to pay our tax bill. Other than that, I think Manassas is a great place, but please consider the residents. Thank you. Good evening and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, so we have a few things on the agenda before we get to those two topics, and we'll try to answer most of those questions once we get to that point. But we do have the UW Oshkosh College of Nursing here to talk a little bit about Project Adam and a project that they did with us. Director McKenna is here to kind of start that out.
As you know, the City of Manassas Health Department is a clinical site for University of Wisconsin Oshkosh School of Nursing students, and they do our, their shadowing experiences in the Manassas Joint School District. And this past fall, they undertook a project called Project Adam, and they're here to talk about it. I'd like to introduce you to Jody Koblitz, who is their professor, and the students. I'll show you how to use this real quick. You have to point toward the computer over in the corner.
Okay, perfect.
And there it is right here. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Like Nancy said, my name is Jody Koblitz. I am a professor at the UW Oshkosh College of Nursing, and here I have half of our clinical group. They will introduce themselves as they present the project to you. But we are very fortunate to partner with the Health Department and work in the schools to extend a project that the Manassas School Nurses had already started. And we're very excited about how far we were able to take this and promote safety within school. So without further ado, the students will come and present their project with you.
Hi, everyone. Like Jody said, we're students from UW Oshkosh. We're senior nursing.
If we could get you to come a little closer to the microphone, otherwise it'll look like you're a mime on the video.
We're senior nursing students. My name's Alyssa.
Hi, I'm Cassidy.
My name is Mitchell.
I'm Ryan.
Before we started our project, we did a little bit of research on the City of Manassas in general. Some of the biggest things that we found and wanted to focus our project on was the increased rate of heart disease within the city. It's almost double what it is in the state of Wisconsin, so that is something we wanted to focus on. A little bit about what Project Adam is. It was developed after a student in high school, a high school basketball player collapsed on the court. This was in Whitefish Bay, and it was found after the incidence that proper CPR and AED use would have the potential to save his life, but no one in this situation really knew how to implement it or approach it. Because Manassas has the increased incidence of heart disease, we decided that Project Adam would be a good idea to continue and educate the school district on. As far as our research before, we also looked at some of the current literature that has been published. One of the biggest things that we found in a research study was that 44% of the cases within schools of, like, heart disease collapsing within schools was students and 56% was adults. So that was important for us to show and share with the schools because we had to kind of show them that it was half and half, so it could affect anyone within the school, visitors, family, parents, students as well. And then of those cases, 85% of the cases, 71% of the people that had collapsed because of cardiac arrest survived with the use of CPR and AEDs. Another study showed that the rate of people involved in high school sports were increasing, so it was good to focus Project Adam on that as well. And then currently, 21 states require mandatory CPR training in high schools, but this does not include Wisconsin. So again, we just wanted to spread the awareness of CPR training and how to properly do it. So our project plan, our goal, was to assist the Manassas Health Department in continuing making our schools heart-smart and heart-safe schools. Our objective was to have 100% of all of our schools to participate in the Heart Smart Team Drill, and we needed them to achieve a good score or better within their first drill. We wanted 75% of the teams to get dropped to shock, so by the time the victim drops and by the time the AED produces a shock in less than three minutes. We wanted 100% of the schools to complete a checklist also and to establish a protocol within the Manassas Joint School District. So our project proposal, we are, the Manassas Joint School District already had a Heart Smart Team in place, and they composed mainly of para-professionals who are CPR and AED certified. And with these drills that we did, we wanted to run Heart Smart Team drills that create a cardiac emergency response plan, or SERP. And then also we wanted to create annual training for school staff. So within our, the actual drills themselves, we would drop mannequin, would be our pretend victim, and then that victim will be found by a staff member within the school, and then that member would be a member of the Heart Smart Team, and then they would initiate 911. And then the AED placement and shock would be delivered hopefully within less than three minutes. And then after this drill, we would debrief. If they made any mistakes, we'd correct them. And the average response time of paramedics to respond is 3.5 to 4 minutes. And the average response time of paramedics to respond is 3.5 to 4 minutes, and that was one of the things we taught them after we debriefed.
All right, so the Cardiac Emergency Response Plan, it correlates with the, as you can see, the increased survival rates in schools. 86% of schools have already a cardiac emergency response plan, and so 35% of schools don't. And so by implementing these cardiac emergency response plans, the Heart Smart Teams would be able to kind of see a checklist of what they needed to do and could just follow those directions to appropriately establish cardiac response and AED protocols in those schools. And so we collaborated with the Manassia nurses with the Health Department, and we created a overall template for all the schools, and then we distributed those response plans in each of the AEDs in the schools. And so we want the Manassia Joint School Districts to have annual staff training on proper AED and CPR training. And so we created a PowerPoint for them during their annual meeting before the school year starts to show them what's in an AED, how to properly use an AED, kind of the mechanisms of whatever is put in there. So we, like I said, we placed those CERP, Emergency Response Plans, in the AEDs for them to kind of follow those directions. And then so evaluating our outcomes and our goals, we were able to get in, we were able to meet all our goals that we had originally planned out when starting this project. We did notice some preparation and participation within the schools varied quite a bit. We noticed that the bigger schools had a much better response, because their teams were a little bit bigger, because you needed about, was it 20% of staff to be a part of the cardiac or the Heart Smart Teams? And so, as you can see, the bigger the schools, the bigger the teams, the smaller the schools, the smaller teams. And so if those schools with the smaller teams only have a couple teachers and 20%, let's say that's only two student or two staff members, the response and the outcome may not be as well. So just taking that into evaluation on maybe increasing number of staff members, not just that 20%, but to fit those proper criteria.
So as you can see here, this is the evaluation of the individual schools themselves. From the data, you can see that most, majority of the schools were in the superior category, with very few that were in the good category, which is still acceptable. But the trend that we found most often is that the larger schools were more superior than the smaller schools. And so that was a reoccurring trend throughout our process. Some of our future recommendations would be to continue the annual drills and CPR and AED training. We also had the Epic Academy Drill, which didn't end up happening with our busy schedules. So our future recommendations, sorry, would be to implement some more drills to them since they weren't able to participate with us. We would also like to include annual education, like we made the PowerPoint to continue educating them, because throughout the year and years to come, they may forget, or their practice may not be as good as, or their memory might not be as well as when we first taught them. So continuing that education would really help them. Also to promote compliance with the CPR and AED certifications and submit Heart Safe School designation checklist, which we have done in the AED kits. We'd also like to follow up with Project Adam for full designation, which we are still in the process of doing. And overall, in conclusion, we had a lot of impressions. As Ryan was saying before, some of the schools were more prepared than others. That was basically based on the sizes of the Heart Smart Teams. A lot of the bigger schools were more prepared, because they had more staff showing up at the drills than the smaller schools. We also had to teach the material at a very basic level, because as we learned as school nurses, they don't have the kind of healthcare background that we do. So teaching the CPR and AED use at a very basic level is what we found most efficient. Respondents may also be more comfortable using hands-only CPR. That's one thing that we learned throughout the school districts. As nurses, we were taught to do the hands-on with the breaths, the 30 compressions to two breaths. But we realized that the school districts were taught basic hands-only CPR. And that's okay, too. That's just as efficient and effective, as long as it's done throughout the period until EMS arrives. And then we also learned that routine review and practice is important, like the continuing education, like we talked about, maintaining the drills throughout the school year, so they have that practice, and they're getting used to that emergency situation. So when one does occur, they'll be ready and prepared. Some of the major takeaways that we had were the importance of policy development and the continuing education throughout the school districts, and the overall nurses' impact on school health, which comes down to a lot of primary prevention and interventions to improve the health and keep the students and staff safe in the Manassia School District.
Great, so that was a summation of our project. Again, we'd just like to thank you for allowing us the time to share this with you. Something that the students and myself really find special about Manassia is that the Public Health Department and the school district and the city all work together to provide that wraparound care. So we're really thankful to be a part of this and to continue the process. So thank you for your time.
Before you leave this evening, I'd just like to thank you. We know that CPR and the AEDs have saved lives in our city buildings in the past. We're sure that they will again. So to have these refresher courses and have dedicated students like yourself to make sure that we're ready is very important as part of that plan, to make sure that we're all safe and, and hopefully going home to our loved ones in the evenings and have those opportunities. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments. Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thank you for being here today, especially the eye-opening 13-plus percent that you've shown us today about the city of Manassia, where the state average is like half of that. That's very eye-opening. I was around when we first put our first machine into the city, and that was at our old city hall. And I always hoped that they wouldn't have to use it on me one day, so. But there was one part that you had mentioned about Project Adam. I don't know what Project Adam is, so could someone brief, briefly just tell me what Project Adam is? I hope that's, that's going to be on the test, by the way.
So we had a slide in there. It was about how a student in Whitefish Bay collapsed during a basketball game, and there was no one around to initiate CPR or use an AED on him, so he ended up passing away. So then his family started Project Adam in response to that, and has been spreading that throughout Wisconsin since.
Okay. By the way, you go to a great school. I'm alumni from UW Oshkosh, and I always love it when you guys come here. We've had other people in your area that have helped out the city before. Very appreciative of that. Could you just, down the line, tell me what community you came from?
I'm from Pewalki, Wisconsin. It's near Milwaukee.
Sure.
I'm from Appleton.
Okay.
I'm from Somerset, Wisconsin. It's on the western side of Wisconsin.
Okay.
And I'm from Oshkosh, so I didn't move too far.
Okay. Well, welcome to the city of Manassia.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, the next item on the agenda is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through I and Communications J through N, and then some items were placed on our desk from a person from the public, not from the council, and hopefully we can add those also. Either that or have them for the next.
We can add them to the next agenda if you'd like. Is there any discussion? Oh, there's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I have discussion on Communication K, the survey regarding the city of Manassia's outdoor recreation plan and the press release that went with that. Have you, has this announcement been made anywhere other than a press release?
Yes, it has. We've used our social media sites primarily to get this word out. We're just sort of rolling it out right now, and this survey will be available for a number of weeks, probably more like eight to 12 weeks it'll be out there. So we realize that, you know, the holidays, people are busy and maybe aren't looking for this sort of thing. So it's going to be available for a couple months at least.
Could it also be placed on the front page of the city website?
I believe that it has been. I can double-check that tomorrow, but I was, it was intended to go out there, and I believe that it is as of today.
Not just on the Park and Rec page. I didn't find it either place today, but on the actual front page would be of benefit, I think. And then if you could put a respond by date on there or announce one as you come closer to the end, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are five items on the consent agenda this evening. The Minutes to approve from the Common Council of December 3rd, the Administration Committee recommendation from December 3rd for the service contract between the city of Manassia and Fox Valley Human Association, the Board of Public Works recommendations from December 3rd for the sidewalk on the west side of Willow Lane extending to Nicolay Boulevard, the Park and Rec Board recommendation from December 11th for the 2019 through 20 reciprocious agreement with the Village of Fox Crossing, and the Planning Commission recommendation from December 4th for the certified survey map as proposed consolidating 10 and 12 Taco Street. Do we have a, would anyone like any of the items separated? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to separate the Board of Public Works recommendation on the sidewalks for Willow Lane.
Are there any other items?
I'm looking. Really, Mayor, I wouldn't mind taking them all, but.
So we have a request for Item 3 to be separated. If there's no other requests, could we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevanek?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Then I'll move for the Minutes of the Common Council, the Administration Committee's recommendation, the Park and Rec Board's recommendation, and the Planning Commission's recommendation.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Ted Grady. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Alderman Sevanek?
I have a question, maybe for the city attorney on Item 3. Can I postpone this item at this point, or do I have to bring it forward as a motion? I shouldn't have to make it as a motion.
Attorney Captain?
You can just postpone it, sure.
The reason for the postponement is that we received, well, at least I did, I received two emails. I think I saw everybody's name on it. And there was one individual, I believe his wife was here tonight, Janet or Jeanette? Yeah, and so I emailed him back, and I told him that I would honor his request to hold this for the January 7th meeting so he could speak. So if it's okay with this body, I would like to postpone this matter until the January 7th meeting.
So motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion on postponing? Not the topic itself, not the topic. Stan, do you have?
I don't know what you, what you're saying.
Not, not the sidewalk topic, but just the topic of postponement? No, okay. So if there's no discussion, this would be just a motion to postpone this item to January, did you say 7th?
7th, I think, our next meeting.
Could we have a roll call vote then to postpone this?
Well, before I go, Mayor, sorry. I have a question. Josh, this doesn't delay anything, does it? This is not a project that's been bid out anyway, so this is okay to give the other residents opportunity to speak?
Yes, January 7th would be fine. You know, further delays would potentially delay the project, but January 7th is fine.
All right.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote on the postponement, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
As I was flipping your microphone back and forth off, because I was thinking it was that microphone that was off. I'm sorry. So that item will be on the January 7th discussion, then? The next item is action items. Action Item I is the accounts payroll and payable and payroll for December 4th through 13th. Is there a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of December 4th through December 13th, 2018, in the amount of $644,530.83.
So motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing done, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 19 licensing period as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated December 13th, 2018.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing done, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 3 is the Water Street Corridor proposal. Do we have a motion this evening? Alderman Nichols? I've got three of you all at once.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move that we accept the Water Street Corridor proposal by Neighborhood Partners in the amount of $23,500.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Discussion, Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if, Sam, if you would like to update the council and the community a little bit about what this all pertains to?
Yeah, so last year, the Common Council approved some funding for a Water Street Corridor study. And basically what that is, is we know that we have the reconstruction of this project, the Water Street Corridor, from Taco Street up to the locks along the riverfront, being proposed in, I believe it's 2021, 2020, so it could get pushed back to 2021, we'll see. But basically, so with knowing that reconstruction, the lack of street amenities on that, in addition to the recent investment with the Loop de Lake, what we really wanted to do is kind of get ahead of that designing and engineering for that street. And instead of just reconstructing the street, make sure that street that we want to reconstruct is what we want, because the worst thing we could do is construct a street and then find out that's not what we want, and we need to reconstruct that. So basically, this plan is to look at the street alignment, future conditions, existing conditions, the shore wall needs, potential recreational amenities, waterfront capabilities, you know, continuing to have Manassia be your place on the water, funding options, implementation strategies, as well as getting out and getting some public input. There's a wide variety of individuals along this corridor, so we want to make sure we hear from all of them, as well as the overall general citizens. So this is a pretty quick timeline, but we're hoping to kind of turn this plan back around for adoption late March, early April. So we'll be full steam ahead. If approved tonight, we'll set up a consultant meeting with Neighborhood Planners this week, and then we will, again, try to engage the public through multiple variations of public input sessions.
I think the other thing that's important to note is that we did the Downtown Vision Plan a year, year and a half ago, that did look at this area as well, kind of on a much broader scale, on the land use scale. This is the same consultant, and now they'll be working on detailing that portion of the study area, so it's building upon something that we've already invested in as well. that we've already invested in as well. Do we have any other questions? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we've had two studies on this already, both the downtown study and the, the Fox Locks Authority, or State of Wisconsin Authority. We had a workshop at the library on that one, too. So certainly two studies, and now a third study. And I really think we got the cart before the horse here because of, we do have some potential, as it states in this document, potential development. And I know there's some parties that have already purchased land. Why would we put this, this corridor study before we know what the developers want in that area, or what their project, their footprint of that area is going to be?
Any of the investors that currently own those properties, they're, they're basically just holding those properties as investment. They, they're looking from guidance from the city as to, as to what we want, what we, the other amenities to go along with it. It's, it's kind of like a chicken and the egg conversation, but this, this area was also designated as an opportunity zone. You know, one of the, one of the three opportunity zones sets its tracks within the Fox Valley. So it is going to be getting a lot of attention. And what this shows is that Manasha is willing to invest a little bit in our marketing to, to know what we want, which will, you know, help those developers, any investors, things of that nature, have a better understanding of, again, what, what the council wants, what the public wants, what the city vision is. And that'll, that'll help sell that pitch and continue to move it forward.
I certainly don't agree with that. You know, some of these developers, and they have their own agenda, they, they generally don't listen to what we want. They tell us what they want, and that's fine with me. And I think we're putting city dollars out there, and doing a third study in the area, to me, that's just a waste of taxpayers' dollar. And I would really like to see what these developers may want in that area. Also, I noticed that we had five bids, which is good, I appreciate that. You chose a bid that was, was not the lowest bid. You had a company that's just been in business since 2018. There was a review committee with Mayor, Department of Public Works Director yourself, and an Alder, Alder Matt representative. And is there reasons why the, the choice of this company?
Yeah, so I think there, there's multiple reasons. One of the things that, that struck us about the low, the low bid here was that they, they aren't local, which, which obviously can be good.
Just not the low bid, by the way, correct?
So, yeah, so we had, we had interviewed three firms, Azakura Robinson, Grave, and Neighborhood Planners. Again, the, the, the low bid, the reason we kind of stride away from them is because it, they, their proposal had a very lack of public engagement. And again, we, throughout our conversations, it is very apparent that, that we want to be a, a city that, that is transparent to our public. So we thought that was, that was very important, as well as they had very minimal interactions in person, again, with yourselves, the, the public and staff. Neighborhood planners, the individual that has started this company has, again, as the mayor had stated, has worked with a larger company in the past, has a great reputation, as well as it is a continuation of the downtown vision plan, as, as they have worked through that plan and multiple plans throughout the entire state.
Okay. And sometimes it's nice to, to go outside the area. And I noticed there was a company from Minneapolis, Chicago, Madison, and we kind of took, went from Appleton here. So, you know, sometimes you, you might get restricted on, kind of paint yourself in, in the box of what's happening in the Fox Cities, and sometimes it's nice to go outside of that.
And again, Neighborhood Planners, they, their, their support team, as shown in the proposal, includes a design studio out of their landscape architect out of Madison, as well as Place Dynamics, and very economic development, marketing analysis out of Milwaukee. So they, they do bring a wide range, as well as these individuals do work.
Company's less than a year old, though, too, so we don't know how it actually functions either. So there's no track record there with that, but the tax dollars. Again, I think it's, it's premature for the, the city to do this. We have some very good developers that have property here, and I, I think I would certainly like to hear their, because that's what's going to happen. It's not, we're not, we're not going to do it. It's going to be the developers that's going to do the project here. And I think you and your staff and the rest of our staff, I think we're very capable of handling a project like this. You know, you, you look through the proposals and you see, you know, the streetlight, the red concrete, some plantings, and it, you know, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, which I think your department's very capable of doing this. And I don't think it's that big of a project that we couldn't do that in-house. So just looking out for the, the taxpayers, and I think we should wait for the developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Taylor, you referenced two other studies, but the studies basically were other areas of the community that said, hey, wait a minute, you got an area over here that needs something taken care of. It's got a lot of potential. So this study actually is more specific to Water Street. I mean, this is waterfront property. It's very important. I heard tonight even a couple times how we need to get more neighborhood input. So this gives us an opportunity to actually go into those neighborhoods, talk to the people, and also see what they would like. Because I'm telling you, that is such a depressed-looking area, and it has so much potential for the city of Manasha. And when we talk about tax dollars, when we do do it right, we increase the tax base, and we actually help the taxpayer. So I'm in favor of this. Actually, I've seen, I've been around a long time, I've seen studies. This is, although 23,000 is a lot of money, it's probably one of the, the smaller amounts that I've seen in a study in a long time, and I think this will be best for Manasha.
Alderman Kruger? Thank you, Mayor. Sam, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but you brought this before the council last year, correct? This plan to do this?
Yes, this, this, this plan was part of the, the budget approval last year.
Right. So I said, so this was coming down the pipe, everybody did know about it, and this was, this is an overall plan to try to redevelop the area, as Alderman Sevanik said, to benefit the tax base. So I, I don't think it's putting anything before anything. I said, we, we discussed this, we planned on this, and I think we need to go forward with it. Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
I agree with Alderman Sevanik. I don't agree with Alderman Kruger, because we did have this in 2017, myself and a few other Aldermen voted against this project at that time, and the study at that time. Again, let's just not, put some red curbing in, put some new streetlights in, put a whole new street in. The projects come in, developers come in, the, the whole course of that project on Water Street, we don't know what the grade is going to be, we don't know what the buildings that they want to build, we don't know what the access they want. So why put the, the city dollars into a plan here, and then go in and activate this plan, and even cost us more, so when the developers come in? We've had a couple nice projects that were on the books, even going back 20-some years when I was on the council here, that along Water Street, there would be all finger canals put in along the main canal down there, and some very nice, very nice underground parking, and to really utilize that waterfront. We don't even know what we're going to do with the waterfront here, and we're spending money on this project, and then implement the project. And you got the developer sitting there with the land, but we don't know what we're going to do. So I was very out in front of this last year in 2017 budget. Some of you weren't here at that time. And it's again, it's the cart before the horse.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Alderman Taylor, you're right. I wasn't here, I was one that wasn't here last year. Alderman Repella wasn't here last year. So we don't know what the discussions were. But I was just wondering, Sam, we're not looking to do a full reconstruction on Water Street before any of this developers come in, or, I mean, that would be done after what we would find out what we're going to put in there to make the street go with all that stuff, correct? Or is that, Josh?
That is actually one of the things that this plan will study is, what do we want to do with that street? I mean, right now, it's a very, very ugly street. It's, you know, it does not enhance the waterfront. So the, one of the main goals of this study is, how do we use that street and right-of-way to enhance the waterway? You know, what, what can we do as a city to promote that area for development? I mean, right now, with the way it looks, a developer's not going to necessarily come in there and look and go, ooh, I want this. You know, now if we have a plan, follow the plan, it's, you know, we put in a really nice street, all of a sudden, a developer's going to go, well, this is an attractive area, you know, maybe I want to build now. So that, that's one of the goals with this plan, is to give us an idea as far as what do we want to build there? What is the best use of that street right-of-way, as well as the properties in the area?
So it'd kind of be like the same thing, Sam, with the Lawson Canal, where at one of the RDA meetings, that developer said that, you know, we should really look at doing this and that, before putting apartments in or condos and trying to get all that set up first, right? Kind of the same.
Yeah, and what we, what we really want to do is, you know, again, to, to continue to build upon ourselves. Manasha has all the potential and the capabilities of, of being the greatest community in the entire Fox Valley region. So, you know, we did do the downtown vision plan. It was a broader plan, noted this area as a, as a priority redevelopment, sees a major potential, you know, waterfront property. So in, in essence of, of doing this plan, Manasha is noting that it's willing to invest in itself, as well as it, it gives staff, myself, a, a marketing pitch as well, when we start to have those conversations with developers and, and things of that nature, to say, you know, you know, this, this is what, what Manasha wants. And I, I do understand that at times, you know, a developer comes in and has a different opinion, I, you know, that, that does happen. However, if, if we kind of just sit back, it's just going to continue to be deteriorated. So again, that, that street is scheduled to be reconstructed. But the great thing about scheduling a street to be reconstructed is, it's easy enough to get pushed back. So we can always push that back a year, you know, should, should it just not be the right time to move forward with it? You know, maybe it's looking at something else, maybe developers sparking some interest, things of that nature. So again, we'll, we'll continue to move forward with it.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Much of that waterfront, as it exists today, is public, but it's not very attractive at this point. Concrete abuts the water. The shore wall there may need some work, we're not sure about that. There are also some city-owned parcels in, on the opposite side of the street, opposite the water, so it's not all privately owned. There are some city-owned parcels there. And this is also being, part of this corridor plan is to sort of flesh out how the trestle trail and the Loop the Lake can better connect to our, to our downtown. The River Walk is to the east of Taco Street there, and so much of this is also about how to connect those two points and continue to bring people to the downtown.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 18th, there was a Homeland Security Bill, and the federal government that went through, and it, it recognizes waterways. And I've asked many times that we look into enhancing the government canal from Marina to the locks. And this summer, I've had over 30 calls from businesses, from officials, and from many residents, that from the Taco Street Bridge to the locks, this summer, you could have walked over that canal with the algae. And stink. And ask the mayor, ask the State of Wisconsin, ask our congressman, what can we do about this situation here? Nobody wants to touch it. And you say, oh, this is Manasha's place on the water, and this canal is walkable almost. The mats in there were that, that, and stink to high heaven. It would have been in other resident, other neighborhoods, we might have heard a lot more about it. But we're not addressing the issues here, and looking at it as a whole. And we're just throwing, there, there's another 20-some thousand. I've been up here almost 20-some years, and what happens with these is they go on the shelf, and the developer comes in and says, here's what we want. And all I'm seeing is, I want to see the taxpayers' money. And yes, we need to develop that, but there's a lot of things that we don't even, properties have been turned in for problems, and they don't, they don't get fixed either. And I, I apologize for saying that to you, you're new in your department, and hopefully we can change that mechanism and, and get these homes to come up to standards. It is, as Alderman Sevanik said, a very depressed neighborhood, very depressed neighborhood. And we need this. But again, I'm just looking at, the timing here, I think, is skewed.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to beat this to death, but this is very important, what I do have to say here. 30-plus years ago, we had the same thing in our downtown that, what, what we're talking about today. And now it's become almost one of the most beautiful downtowns in the entire state with our marine. By the way, there was no Marina. We dug that out. These are visions that we need. These are visions that we have to follow through on. It takes leadership to follow these studies. I remember Alderman Donnie Griesbach, and I were worried that we were going to get thrown out of office because we spent money on a study to take care of our downtown over here. And I'm telling you, this building that we're sitting in now would not be here if we had not done that. The building next door wouldn't be. The development across the street wouldn't be there. Tens of millions of dollars, people don't realize, came back into the city of Manasha in redevelopment because of a small study like this, that took leadership to follow through on it, and to make this community, and bring the potential of this community forward. So I think this costs, again, I'll say it again, 23,000 is a lot of money, but in the long run, you have to look at things in the long term, and in the long term, this is going to benefit the, the city of Manasha. Who knows, 30 years from now, 20 years from now, that might be one of the nicest areas in, in our city. Alderman Taylor referenced some designs and building plans before, but they weren't followed through on. They should have been followed through on. We forget we didn't have leadership in this community before. We have a really good staff here, talented people. They're new. They're bringing new ideas, and I- new ideas, and I love it. And that's what we need in this community. So keep up the good work, and I'd ask this body to vote for this matter.
Alderman Taylor?
And again, I compliment our staff. I know our staff can do this. I know our staff can do this. And, and, and work with the developers. Let's get a dialogue here, and let's put this whole thing together here, because it's, it all rests on the developers here. We have them. They purchased land. Let's get it together.
I'm going to follow up on what Alderman Sevenik said. We have two options here tonight. We can let the developers lead what we want our community to look like, or we can let the community lead what we want our community to look like. And I think Alderman Sevenik said it very well. We want the community to lead what is going on there. And if we don't do a plan like this, we're not going to lead. The developers are, and we may not get what we want.
Alderman Taylor?
Then I ask you, Mayor, with this project, with the Water Street corridor project, let's get something together right now for the summer, okay? Because Manassia, your place on the water down there isn't very pretty. And we've got businesses, we've got residents, companies that are very upset by this, and let's make this part of our plan. Let's, let's, let's just not do something fuzzy here. Let's put something behind it. And let's get, let's get this waterfront. I've talked to you this summer about it. Let's get this waterfront operating.
Do you have suggestions?
And let's get this operating, Mayor. And let's get this cleaned up.
Do you have suggestions?
Thank you. And I, more than anybody, my blood is blue, Manassia is blue, and I appreciate this, these projects, but let's do it right.
So I have been working with both Army Corps and the Fox River Locks, trying to get something happening there. And our hands are pretty much tied. So if you have other suggestions, we would welcome those suggestions. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mimic or, or second exactly what Alderman Sevenik said. He said it better than I think anybody else could appear on, on why we're doing this and why it needs to be done. Just one quick question, again, for Sam. The neighborhood planners will be communicating with any potential developers or the landowners over there also to help form some sort of plan that we take. Is that correct?
Exactly. We'll, we'll need to, again, continue to strategize. You know, what I've, what I've gotten out of this is that maybe perhaps we need a, you know, instead of just having a, a neighborhood meeting or a business meeting, maybe we need to have a meeting where we bring in local developers. I mean, it, it is a, it's a good idea to, to make sure we have their, their thoughts, too. So again, we will continue to move forward. But again, public input and, and developers, investors, that's, that's all what this plan is.
So people have, so it's not going to be where they come in, drop some plans and say, here you are. They're going to ask the people in the neighborhood. They're going to sit there and communicate with landowners, any potential developers. So, and no one's going to be left out of an overall vision. Everybody's going to be included in the vision in the end. Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
Let's talk to the landowners, not the residents, okay? It's 60% rental down there. Okay, so let's make sure we got the landowners on board, too, here. And now this whole thing's starting to work up. Good. We got some good dialogue here. Let's keep it going. Let's make Manassia a great place here. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-1.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance 23. Is there a, since it was introduced by Alderman Kruger, I'm going to give it to Steve, since it's his ordinance.
Go ahead, Sam. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Alderman Taylor just bent my ear. He also mentioned that he had two constituents in his neighborhood that wanted to speak on this subject, were not able to come to this meeting. This is pretty big. I mean, it's been a one-way for as long as I can remember. And I would love for them to have the opportunity else to be able to meet. You know, what, what stinks about this is that it's the holiday time, and they're not around, and they wanted to be here. So he asked if I would postpone this one also. And also, too, it would give me an opportunity to talk to Mr. Harvey. Mr. Harvey and I have not always been on the same page with each other, but we've always highly respected one another and our opinions. And I'd like to have an opportunity to talk to him a little bit more on this particular subject. So I'd like to postpone this also till January 7th, as long as that doesn't kill any construction, which I don't think that's going to do.
Again, January 7th for our design would be fine. You know, pushing it further back, you know, we're going to obviously have issues.
I'm sorry, but I, I just, like, when my colleagues ask me, I, no.
So there was a motion, was there a second? There's a motion and a second? Alderman Grady?
I was just going to ask Alderman Sevenik, are those individuals planning on being here on the 7th? Because I hate to postpone something. They don't show up. We postpone it again, postpone it again. They have to be, you know, state their case or whatever. Okay.
Alderman Taylor?
One was sick tonight. Okay. I got a call, and I expect both of them to be here. And also, this is, half of this project is Tom Grady's district. A lot of you think that this is just my district, the 500 block. 500 block is in the second district. The sixth district is, 600 block is under Alderman Tom Grady's district. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 2 is Resolution 32 pertaining to sewer service charges. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion for Resolution R-32-18, a resolution pertaining to sewer service charges and surcharges introduced by Alderman Kruger, recommended by Board of Public Works.
So a motion and a second by Alderman Langdon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item 3 is Resolution 33 approving the redistribution and the reduction in the bank sick leave and health insurance fringe benefit adjustments. I'll let you, whoever wants to make the motion, read the whole thing. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I will make the motion for R-33-18, a resolution approving the 2019 operating budget adjustments for the purpose of redistributing the reduction in bank sick leave and health insurance fringe benefit adjustments across the various departments and programs identified in the 2019 general fund budget introduced by Mayor Merkis.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady. Alderman Sevenik? So, so what, yeah, what this does?
Thank you, Mayor. Anyways, during our budget session, if you recall, we made some changes, and that's what this reflects. But I think there was a little more tweaking to this. And if, John, if you wouldn't mind, if you could explain to the, the TV and to us what those were.
Sure, I can do that. First off, the bank sick leave. If you remember that, we had proposed a 1% fringe benefit cost across all the different departments and all the different funds and program areas. And then after the night of the adoption on November 19th, there was a motion made and approved by the council to reduce that funding into the bank sick leave program by $8,000, which would be, and that would be the portion that's affecting the levy. So what I did is I took the $8,000 just against and redistributed it across just the general fund department budgets. So what you have is the list, it was like a three-page list, of how it was distributed. So what I'm going to plan on doing is, if this resolution were to be approved, this item, plus also with the health insurance. The health insurance one was, we had already put an amount of, we had put in a 12%, at the time we'd be putting together, the budget together, we assumed there's about a 12% renewal increase across all the departments. However, when the mayor and myself were getting ready to release the budget, and we knew we were going to be able to find a couple ways to try to reduce that amount downward a little bit, which we did, so we had put in there already $39,543 as a reduction, just in one lump sum, knowing that that would have to be redistributed. And then on the night of the council, when we also approved the health insurance renewal for 2019, we were able to reduce it by an additional $10,000. So the, the budget right now is sitting at $49,543. But that, that was just the general fund portion. All, across all the funds, it was like about $69,000 that we were able to save. But when I redistributed this at, not at a 12% increase, but it was like about a 7.3% increase, which I also have attached here, all the calculations. It, that's redistributing about $53,543. So what I'm doing in effect is, and we had kind of talked about this the night of the adoption, that, that'll leave a little money left over in that, in that little area for about $4,000 to be redistributed upon, if we have a retirement, and then you have, or somebody during the year ends up going from single to married, or goes from married, just a couple, to children, or children, or adding a child due to, due to a birth, that they would end up changing their plan as a qualifying event during the year. So this would provide us that a little additional money we could transfer there if we needed to. But right now, I'm looking at redistributing about $53,000 for the health insurance. So what we're doing tonight is, we're not amending the budget in total of the resolution. We're not changing that. All we're doing is redistributing those two pocket reductions across the departments, because I'd like to have it correctly reflected what the intent was of the council at the departmental level, at the time we reprint the book here in early January, and then give that to you. So all the departments know, all of their budgets are a little bit lowered due to these two fringe benefit reductions.
I just want to add that, in my opinion, when I made those motions, that was my intent regardless. So I really don't know why we're doing this, but I think you're such a stickler.
I'm, I'm, well, unfortunately, it's a four-line resolution. I'm sorry, Alderman Kruger, had to read that whole thing. I didn't know any other better way to state it. I guess I could have done it a little bit more succinctly. But you know, I'm very transparent. So I wanted you and all the departments to know that there are reductions that are being redistributed across all departments in the general fund that affected all the levy. Doesn't affect any of the other funds. Those numbers are all going to stay as is. What will, in effect, happening is, they will all come in under budget, because we're not reducing those budgets downward. But the actual costs that they're, they're going to be accumulating throughout the year for health insurance will be lower than what the budget is. But it doesn't affect the levy. Same thing with the bank sick leave.
Correct, because the taxes went out already. So.
Yes.
All righty. Thank you, John.
So in layman's terms, this is putting the numbers that you actually approved on budget night in the correct spots in the book. It's not changing anything. It's just putting the numbers where they belong, so John can print a book for all of us. That was a very long answer from John to say that. Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Or essentially, a general bookkeeping.
There you go.
And I'm pleased to know that there are at least $4,000 remaining for any changes in coverage that might occur during the year. That was one of my concerns during the budget process, and that question was sort of left unanswered until this evening. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item L is appointments. There's two this evening. Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for your appointment of Jessica Crane to the Board of Review for a term of 12/17, 18 to 12, uh, 7/1, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item 2, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll also move for your second appointment of Joanne Roush to the Board of Appeals for the term of 12/17, 2018 to 2/1 of 2018.
Of 21.
Oh, 21. No, I just want it till the end of this year. No, I'm just kidding.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Kruger. Discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Is Ms. Roush still your campaign manager?
I don't have a campaign manager.
For, well, she was. Just asking a question.
I never had a campaign manager. Joanne is one of my friends, yes. Joanne lives in my neighborhood.
She took that role, she took that role on the internet, Mayor. That's why I'm asking that question.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing for, no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
We'll need a roll call vote then, please. Joanne?
Motion carried on roll call 6-1.
Item N is public comments on any matters listed on the agenda. Are there any public that wishes to comment at this point? Seeing no one, is there a motion to recess to committees at this point? Is there a second? So a motion by Alderman Taylor and Alderman Kruger. All those in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned, are at recess. Thank you.